Good evening all, as the chairman just called it the new order, but also our guests that are outside can come on in so we can begin to process what they're saying. So I would like for you to...
Boys, boys, no, no, no.
We welcome our cheerleaders, senior football players. Okay, welcome for all. This evening, as chairman and members of the committee, we'd like to recognize Northern Youth Football and Cheer. I have a few words that you can note. First of all, I'd like to start with the 12 new cheer squad. Are they here, cheer squad? Do they ask for your follow-up? After the second place was finished at the New England Regional, continue the traditional cheer dance by reading a second and setting their national championship. National championship. Even though the squad wasn't able to guarantee two, their success in the 2022 season shows that the future is very bright among new cheer. They finished first at the power in Pinkwood Tisch and second at the Bay State Conference of Tisch as well as second at the E-Nas Championship Massachusetts State and New England Regional. Ladies and gentlemen, the 12 new cheer squad of Northern Massachusetts. We are all proud of the 14 under cheer squads, cheer squad. We are also proud of the 14 under cheer squads who finished with a third place finish at the A-Y-C championship. Where they...
Um, the majority of the 14 cheer squad has, were all serving at Marcus's.
Perfect, we'll still celebrate them, which, that's okay, we'll make sure that they're recognized and I do have a certificate for them if someone would like to take ours. All right, great. So the 14 cheer squad is the first cheer squad in the entire country to reach three straight national championships. Very impressive. They were national champs in 2021, as well as top three performances in the national championships, second in 19 and third in 2022. They are four-time state champions, three-time New England Regional cheer champions, four-time Eastern Mass Regional champions. When the girls' lights have shown the prize, this cheer squad can perform at their best. In three national championships and in those six performances, they have never had a deduction in any of their performances. Hitting wasn't known in, hitting wasn't known in their cheer world, hitting zero, that is, is the definition of perfect, right? That's some really young cheer. They lead Northern Youth Football and Cheer as the most decorated, most successful cheer squad in the history of cheer here in Oregon. Congratulations to them. All right. The fifth grade junior lancers are your 2022 Eastern Mass Super Bowl champions with a 19-7 victory over the North Attleboro Jets. Perfect, love the way you guys beat the Jets. Running up at the 2022 Massachusetts State Championships losing to a 2-13, the fifth grade teams rose to their Super Bowl victories paid with what they call the revenge war. As they faced three teams that during the regular season had beaten them before. They started off by beating Morgan, which seemed that they had lost to them previous week, then in semi-finals, they defeated the undefeated Eastern Tigers, a team that had won easily against them, and finally to complete the tour, they lost to North Attleboro. This was a North Attleboro team that had won in week one during the regular season, when a fellow team, Team Drew, he don't bounce back. The second time they faced an opponent, let alone winning it three straight times. Congratulations to the junior lancers because they are your 2022 Eastern Mass Super Bowl champions. And a lot of members, so everybody can leave, but we do have a special presentation tonight that we'd also like to make. Someone that I wanted to know my decade here and his service of this program, communicating with us, work the better, these kids provide enough opportunity. So, more of all the schools this evening would like to represent their readers for 15 years dedication to Northern Youth Football, cheer and families of Norton. Sign up to attend the schools on this day, March 9th, from 2:03 on, we have one of the most popular schools in the school community, I know we've not had it tonight, but we congratulate them for all of this work that is done for the years. Thank you. And your assistant, you need to go.
Right, so our next item is the World School Project. Uh, thank you one and all for having us here this evening. As, as fans who are familiar, every year we'd like to come and speak to a little bit about Project 351. This is a project that's here every year, and of course, it's a spirit of heart. It is the largest community service organization of its kind in the country. And the dedicated mission of Project 351 is to train and to inspire a whole new generation of service leaders. And so each year, every community in Commonwealth or 351 communities in Commonwealth, although you didn't know, every community in Commonwealth is charged for choosing a gatekeeper to be their ambassador. And so every year, it's, it's not an easy task and it's a task that, you know, sometimes we have a hard time with. However, some years it's easier than others. And so this year was one of those years where it was very easy for me. Because as a sixth grader, there's somebody to my left here, started off in a great way here in rural school. And she distinguished herself as someone who seemed as if to fit like a glove with the stated mission of the organization. Service for self, someone who cares about social justice, invests a strong feeling about, you know, what is right, what is, you know, what should be done. And so this year's ambassador, to my left, is none other than Vanessa Lee. So I'm going to allow her to just speak a little bit about what launch day was like. Launch day took place on Martin Luther King Day weekend and I'll allow her to kind of just, you know, give her your, her impressions of how the day went. And, you know, we can field some questions and speak a little bit more if you'd like as well, so.
Um, well, it was really fun. Um, I met a lot of people there who just have like the same comments just as me. And it was really nice to have people like, I don't know, like care for you. And that is exactly like you, because we're all in here at the same exit. Um, it was really fun to serve because we all had individual places we were put to serve on a day. And I was put at Crayos to Crayons and, um, my group, um, was put in a space for things issues to, and sort of, and like, like gender and size. Um, and it was, it was really good because I just felt like we were all there together just to do the same thing and serve and help.
So as I mentioned, we're more into services, the chief goal of the organization. And so on launch day, Cradle's Crayons is one of the largest sites that we have, but there are other sites that we, you know, utilize in the past, organizations utilize in the past. Places like Great Boston Food Bank, places like the Pine Street Inn. So every year, things are a little bit different because some years, you know, we go to different places. And so Cradle's Crayons is one of the largest partner organizations for Project 351. And in fact, when it comes to Cradle's Crayons, Project 351 is the largest donor for that organization here in Massachusetts. So it's a great partnership and it makes you feel great, it's, it's, it feels, it gives you a good feeling at the end of the day. And so, um, you know, we come to you again to just kind of remind everybody about the importance of the organization. And so coming up very shortly is our annual spring service kickoff, uh, which is also a benefit to Cradle's Crayons. So I'll let Vanessa talk a little bit about that as well, because I know that that is something that she's going to spearhead for us this year as well.
Um, spring service, I'm really excited for it. It's, um, each ambassador is making a fundraiser to collect clothes to give to Crayos to Crayons. And, um, we started with an ad to make sure which ones are, that usable, because they have to be like, kind of used. And it's...
And to add to what you just said, so well, we're going to involve every school in the district. And so we'd like, we'll be reaching out to all the elementary schools, the high schools as well, to hopefully get participation on their behalf. And so I'll be, you know, submitting a flyer, you know, for your approval, that sort of thing, uh, so that we can get all the other schools involved. We've had some great involvement the last couple of years. Our goal over the years to pull up pickup truck haul of clothes, uh, and we've managed to do that the last couple of years running. So, uh, so hopefully we can do that again. Our drop-off site is at Gillette Stadium, so they're at the voting bar, which is, you know, we're thankful for. Anyway, so this is, this is what we'll be doing. That'll be starting the week of the 20th, can you say it? The week of the 20th, so they run it for two weeks, starting the week of the 20th and then the 27th to, uh, April 1st, April 1st, so.
So it's the 20th of March.
Yes, 20th of March, that's coming up in about two weeks' time. So, uh, so definitely encourage anybody who's got gently used clothing or, what are the age groups for that? Toddler to young adult is what we're looking for, so toddler to young adult, with younger gently used clothing, uh, to fit that, you know, that clothing product. So, uh, you can just swap it off in schools and we're creating incentives as well to hopefully, you know, kick up the supporting of that. So, do you have any other questions for Vanessa or...
No, congratulations. Um, it's, it's every year we hear about it, it's a worthwhile cause to see our youth being more involved in their communities. For us, I would wish you the best with your upcoming one reason, uh, if we can help in any way, please reach out to Vanessa.
Good luck, thanks, Joe.
Uh, so Vanessa, we have to go on both the schools, as our 2022 Project 351 student ambassador, congratulations. By the way, this gentleman, I got a, uh, there's a tweet that came up, uh, about her being a cheer director speaker, she's one of the three, three hundred, I think, she was one of the speakers. I got a text from a colleague who sent it out, Jeff Roddy, we'll see how it works out. So congratulations, really proud of you, and if there's anything you need to help, just call. Okay.
Right, so our next item is the Therapy Canine Civic Civic presentation.
This is my work off of a leash, maybe the month, the year.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Maya O'Connell. I'm a sophomore at Warren Hatch and I'm here to request your permission to help me move forward with a proposal I have regarding my history civics project. As you're probably aware, there is currently mental health crisis across the nation. Suicide rates and depression among adolescents are on the rise. Now, whether ever, students need outlets and strategies to help us cope. I am proposing that we bring therapy dogs to the normal schools to help depress these needs and I am asking for your approval to do so. The relationship shows that there are many social emotional benefits that therapy dog provides. I as a medical doctor, I am an engineer to discuss these benefits and they are in favor of me highlighting this initiative. I would like to begin in committing this at the high school level with the hope that over time, it can be introduced at the elementary and middle level as well. In order to make this happen, I will be collaborating with Mrs. Adriana Musto, who is here this evening, along with her certified therapy dog, Wilson. Mrs. Musto is a certified member of the Wom's Massachusetts Therapy Team. She's dedicated this important, worthy cause and would volunteer her time, therefore the district would not hurt any cost. Although only one is with us tonight, Mrs. Musto has two therapy dogs. Both dogs are fully certified and carry their own insurance. The dogs are experienced with over 100 hours of volunteering with service members to the United Services Organization, reading programs at the public library and patient visits at Beth Israel Hospital in Austin. They're excellent with children and adults. In the initial days, we would begin by asking students and teachers with the opportunity to interact with their dogs. We start small and gradually progress the program. Initially, teachers will be able to perform scheduled time for the dogs in the jerk classroom. This could ideally take place during L B or physical education and health classes. And then over time, through lunches and perhaps group visits to the guidance office and other specialized programs. I am asking that you, for this request, to help provide a strategy that will support those social emotional needs of our students and allow you, who pursue my vision, to train those dogs to the North Public School community, which will benefit not only students, but the staff across the district as well. Thank you very much for your time and consideration of this request. Mrs. Musto and I will begin with questions if you have.
I'm going to open my comments. Uh, my first comment is going to be, by the way, it was an awesome job.
Thank you.
And my second comment will be, I see where you're not voting on, but I will preempt any vote yes. The first one, for us to put behind us and vote yes.
Yeah, the next meeting, you will have the first reading of a policy for K9 therapy dogs in one of those schools. And then following me, you will be taking second.
I'm establishing where I stand on this.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yes, I think not.
Actually, um, so I live in Norton and I have, two year ago, I was ninth and third by September. Um, we chair the dogs, Cass independently, a handler of me and then usually an additional handler. Um, so we would be coming through the school with a K9 escort, which would cover the U S of P care. And then whoever my co-chairing is, so when you see three goldens coming at you, it's like, oh, look at this. So, um, he's going to come say hello to all of you who are here and do his, do his therapy work, please.
I have to take reading lessons from Maya, that was awesome, well presented, no hesitation at all, very clear. Maya, this evening, we would like to recognize your career civics project, a proposal to bring that we came into our schools. Very well done. This is part of the state civics initiative, that's a good comment to make, and encourage that students are involved in civics and in our situation, students are doing projects as part of being connected to their community. So, uh, congratulations. We can kind of, I mean, the dog's much better than not to be, so I guess, I guess, already got that. We will, the policy, the policy will be white horse. Yeah, the policy is, uh, we, uh, we, well, there are situations that students have, for example, uh, are allergic to dogs or maybe scared of dogs. You remember we had to prime dogs up to the COVID and then they, they are now considered comfort dogs. Uh, they've been coming into our elementary schools now as well. Uh, and we have other folks that are interested in, in supporting, including staff members. So, uh, this is a unique situation because it's, it's really something that we as a school district have wanted, but really have not been able to find and hold. So, thanks to Maya, she gave this, so.
All right, so the next item is the STEAM showcase and prospective advanced manufacturing council. Mr.? Harry, do you have any presentations?
Um, yeah, why don't you go in there?
May I want to use the mic?
Cheers. Okay. Hello, I'm Karen Mary. I work at the high school and I am part of a Norton STEAM advisory committee. Um, and we're holding an event and we tried, we've been trying to do the event since we started in February 2020, you know what happened? So we've got one virtual event and now we want all of our hands up once at the one day event. So we're having a STEAM showcase and STEAM stands for science, technology, engineering, art and math. And what we did was asked students and teachers from all the schools to help and come show off what their students have done in this area. And then we also have a lot of businesses and local organizations coming. And so I just passed out, um, to all you who is coming. So the first guy is mostly who's coming from like the schools and we can call in all the sports club, the esports club and the different clubs at the school. So you can see there's teachers bringing their students and their projects from all different levels. And on the other side, um, I have, wait, um, the other side is, these are all the organizations in town that are coming and what they're doing. So, um, I'm here to advise you to come to the STEAM event and I'm also here to, um, promote the STEAM event to all the families in town. There's going to be a lot of activities for all ages, so it could be hands-on activities for any age, including career explorations. And just to see what businesses we already have in Norton that are already making things. So it's kind of like a networking opportunity, a career opportunity, uh, learning about STEAM and hands-on activities. So that's the first thing. Then, questions about that? Well, we'd love to have you there. Um, so it's our first one, so we'll see how it goes.
We're going to be there, you know, we're going to be there, we'll be there.
You better be there. And then, let's see. Okay, then if anyone has any questions about the STEAM? All right, so hopefully you can find time to cover that. And then the next thing we're going to talk about is just introducing the perspective that we were going to add new pathways to the high school. And so what we did was we looked at the labor markets and we're working with the Department of Education and they have innovation pathways. And we're working with the Department of Education and we looked at the labor market and we saw that manufacturing had a need in this area. And so what we've been doing is filling out all these documents and applying for all these, um, to have the status. And we already do have pathways in our high school for business in Chatham, Kentucky, and now we're going to add another one for manufacturing. And we chose that because of the labor market, like I said, but we also started going around to all the companies just here in Norton. There's a ton of manufacturers in this area and when you go there, they're all looking for new people. So it's a new, it's a trade that people may not know about. So you might know about like attrition and plummy, but you don't know about the manufacturing machines. And they're all, um, adding high-tech computers to the manufacturing, so it's kind of like a double. So you can do it as a career right after high school, but then you can also take this pathway if you want to go into engineering or math or computer science, because you're going to be doing that in college and then come back and design manufacturing. So these doctors just say, like, if you're going to join this pathway, then you just take home courses and every, you take one hour pathway courses. It could be a tech home course, like robotics or physics or engineering. And then later you'll take college-ready courses, like AP courses and early college, which we've been working on to get more margins with that. And you'll get some certifications and then senior, you do a project with the companies in town and, you know, try to solve problems for them and work with them and have mentoring and some support. And one of the most important things to mention is that invite anyone to apply. Anyone who's in this program, starting in ninth or 10th grade, who can be in this program, regardless of if you pass technical. Anyone who's in this program, starting in ninth or tenth grade, you can be in this program regardless of your past academic performance. There's going to be supports for everyone to succeed in this program. So we just wanted to tell you about our status with that right now. We've already passed in, and then it's separate from one application. And then we just passed in the other one where we need that. We worked with Mr. Dolan right here. And then we worked, Ms. Switzer and Dr. Amiel came and helped us. And then we had a couple of, we have a career counselor help and then we had Exment from the high school help us as well. Everyone's been reaching out to all of the different organizations and really trying to get the businesses to do something and partner with us in our education. Do you have any questions about anything?
I mean, I think it's just another opportunity for our students and it's just going to continue to make our school that, and better again. My one question, comment. Is there a way to look into some of like the industry certifications, like a six sigma belt? Or any way to enhance that into the curriculum?
Yeah, he's asking about certifications. So we, we already have a couple of certifications listed and we're working with the manufacturers that sign an MOA with us to kind of what specific one would be good for this area. Because they all have different products in me, so we're trying to get, yeah, we're definitely going to have certifications, can we answer a yes?
Questions? So a comment on this, but also on, I think, more the general direction that we've been taking in the district. I'm a big fan of any endeavor that gives early, just early scholars to students on to possible career paths. So I'm a huge fan of this, but I was both because sometimes they find a career they love and sometimes they find out that they don't really love. Yeah, this is programs specifically great, but also the district as a whole, I think this is a really big direction.
So just FYI, this goes back to the four phases that we've been talking about for quite a while, over two years now, actually, pre-COVID and it kind of slowed down. We have the innovation pathway, which this is tied into. It must be connected through local labor. It's not funded, it's only $24,000 funding grants, but it has to be connected to the Bristol County area and in the Norton area. So that's the requirement, which is not looking at downtown Boston or a better. And we do have a local business that is looking to partner with us, numerous. The second is the early college, which we spoke about, which we have under going underway. We have the CTE, the career of tech education, which is our business technology, which has three pathways within the one program. We're looking at expanding those programs. So those are the programs I sell, Eastern, Bristol, Aggie down. And then the last part is what we, we're calling our work development, which is really for students who schedule much different in terms of wanting to go into the workplace and not continue their education in the technical field per se, or technical school or technical field and or two or four year college. So those are the four pathways, just for the public to know, visiting first, we hope many innovation pathways. And thank you to this fantastic teacher for really being the person who's just dragging this as much as possible. So we thank her.
I'm passionate about it.
Yes, you are.
Oh, you're a pitcher?
Change.
It's a win-win, so it's really with the manufacturers, they're looking to, oh, we need people. So it's going to be very, it's just good to open people's, like you said, it's open people's minds to different careers and pathways here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next item is the public hearing on the school budget. So according to the town charter, the most of public hearings were published in the summer protocol. Dr. Ray will review for the audience, the superintendent's recommended FY24 school budget. Q and A session will follow for the public. At this time, I'll introduce a motion to open the public hearing on the FY24 school budget. So is there a second?
Second.
All of them, please.
Go for it. Go for it. Mr. Sheedy?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Sevaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Ms. Justine?
Yes.
All right, welcome to our. Did you hear me? Did you hear me from here? Is it breaking?
Yes.
So as you know, my stat, we have to do a review of our budget as a public hearing. This is now the school committee approved budget as of last week. We held a working session to finalize it. This is the process that starts in November internally, goes to the school committee and then becomes known quicker. As you can take a look, we are in what I would call a perfect storm. And I'm going to say that again, a perfect storm, and if you watch the movie or read the book, it means there's some significant issues. The issues rely around a couple of different things. One of which is the storm of federal aid. The second part, special education. And the third part, transportation costs. Contractual obligations, of course, are always part of every contract, every budget that we do. Our increase is a 9.1% increase or 3,32,533. There are no, zero general education positions in this budget. I'll say that again, there are no general education positions in this budget. There are 4.6 FTEs, 0.6 for English language learning, which is an increase in our population. Two paraprofessionals in special education and two special education teachers for specialized programs. So that is the makeup of the entire budget. Here are our current March 3, 2023 action in the moment. 21, 83 plus the 32 out of district enrollment, so just over 2200 students. 216 student choice students, 46 reed students, a total of 2477 that we have in the district. Broken down by grade, by choice, and you can probably read some, you can see the active. Breakdown of student choice enrollment available to you as well, current students that are enrolled, where they're enrolled. A couple of different things that you want to keep an eye on. You have a middle school philosophy and a high school philosophy in this district. So that means that if you want to eliminate positions, you're also eliminating programming, i.e. the high, the middle school can't be a, a, a middle school. It has to go to a different philosophy because of the number of students involved. This is our special education moment by, as you can see, by grade, by school. We have 587 students, approximately 21% of our student population, who receive some type of IEP services within the district, including the kinderage 88 students that we provide services to by law, but aren't enrolled as students in the district. This is the next special education trend report. There will also be a, the enrollment report that will be coming up next. And that will be put up, all of this is already on our webpage under about, go to K12, go to about, go to business office. And it's right here, it says FY24, it's all printed and published, unless it's a change page, we have it in public here, if you move on. This, this page, general analysis, what it tries to do is it takes a look at, this is done by a third party. It takes a look at, trying to take a look at what are our trends, trends looking like in special education, which is going to be somewhere in the 35% of our total budget. Most of the districts right now are in the 27th to 30th, we guess, and typically be higher. I'm not going to get into a lot of specifics of this because trend reports are what they are, they go up, they go down. But there are a couple, there are a couple that I think are important, and that is the number of breakdown of students. As you can see, we have some dips during COVID, we have some increases after COVID. That's, that's very typical because of a couple of things, enrollment in terms of students who didn't come to school because of COVID. It could also be programming, students out of district versus in district, if you move on. Then you move into everything to do with the cost of the student. You can see on the bottom right, what's that one, everyone, glasses, what, thank you, what? On the bottom, that's not right, I might have pulled over. You'll see that the, the, the 22, 23 average, including fringe benefits, so that would be all of the benefits given to educators in class. It's about, in special ed, it's about 38, almost 39%. Pretty significant. The, the expenditure, including on average, it looks like it's almost 12.8 million. We have a new number today for, for next year, another 1. something with a similar line there. This takes a look at the average cost per IEP, approximately $23,448 is the current estimate. This number will change, of course, because this is not based on the end of year value report. This is based on current and they take the number of IEPs and how much we're paying the teachers and how much our district and all of that. This new report, by the way, that we put into, this is our gaps in terms of general education and special education for each of the years. As we're looking at this particular case, costs as well. Overall, you'll see some dips again, most of that because of the situation with COVID, which caused both increases and dips. And of course, we'll see the special, the general education is higher than special education, another 15, over 1500 students. You can pass by this number, one more, again, these are available. So this is an interesting one because this takes a look as before. This takes a look at the total outside special education placement expenses, which is estimated this year at $1.8 million. If you take a look at the 2021, you take a look at those COVID years, but surprisingly, although it's going up, when I started here in 2012, 13, or actually 13, 14, the total cost was almost $3 million for our special populations. And so that number has to come down. And the enrollment number in that population is pretty stable. It's not like we're losing a lot. And then the collaborative expenses, these could be the, the public collaborative, we belong to Fight Over Reeds. The total expenditure here, as you can see, fluctuates a lot. Most of this is because of programming and available space. We're currently approaching a million, that's just in the last couple of weeks, you've had students develop, students who've been. You've heard the story overall of all the special education enrollments in July 1st, after July 1st, that moved into town. They're crossing us, are crossing us six figures. So in the, in the expenditures, as a percentage of the total special education outside of collaborates, you'll take a look and see that what we've tried to do is we, we, we work with families and parents on specialized program, but this is always going to be a yin and yang going back and forth. I know that Vinnie Cersei, who's our director of KPS in Rome. And one of the things we try to do is we go, we say to parents, our collaborators are good collaborators that offer good programs. It's our first choice, that's why we're talking about them. Unfortunately, the collaborative costs have happened to go up as well, on average hitting around $70,000 per student. And that doesn't include in the vicinity of anywhere between 20, 40, 50,000 dollars for transportation, depending on the cost of students. So last but not least, over the last 10 years, we've actually done some pretty good stuff. When you look at the overall expenditure in this department, we've continued to, it goes up. But the fact is, some of our costs have come down because we brought students home. 10 years ago, we had over 60 students out of district. We currently have right around that 32 to 35 fluctuates almost every single day. But in general, what we're trying to do is create our own programs, which have a cost positive for the school budget and the town budget, if you will. When you're taking a look at, either do you take someone and take one student and they go out for 100,000, take another student and they go out for 100,000, take another student for 100,000, and we hire one teacher for 80, yes, there's a cost to potential benefits. And then parabola, et cetera, but those numbers on, on average are about 60% of the total cost versus well. We also believe that we, in most cases, educate our students well. And we're happy to, to provide that, that type of information to our families when they go out and see the collaborators or if they are pushing to see the private, so we can work with this. All right, so this is a new reporting that we're giving the finance committee, we've given the school committee, and that is just really taking a look at some of our breakdowns. So you'll see every line item that we have, how we're using those expenses. This is school choice and circuit breaker money for a total for the budget supporter, 4.16648. Circuit breaker, 1.8 million. And then we've got school choice as part of this whole dynamic. You see in our line item budget, it actually says it's revolving account, if it's school choice account, or if it's just a budget that is paid for. We've also added other revenue sources as part of the entire report. There's a revolving account, also all of our grants. And then we put the FTEs, in other words, how many people are being paid for this line. So I'll just choose one. The facilities revolving account is paying for 2.7% of the custodians that work in our district after 2022, meaning the remaining are all coming out of the operating budget. This line begins to take a look at the budget and FTEs. Again, we've aligned everything that we can, 18.5 FTEs in special education, federal 240, I believe that's all paraprofessionals, if I remember correctly. And then again, it breaks down into positions. So we have 33.34 positions in the, in the, in the 400 or so educators and all employees that are actually paid for by these supports that are not part of the actual operating budget. We again changed the report, the line item report that the FinCon and school committee is used to is still printed. However, we took it and we aggregated it as much as we could so that you could see the breakdown of where things are by department, how much we spent. Again, NTA FTEs in school choice grants revolving is not as 15.4. Paris, 21.5 and custodians, 2.7. And we're just trying to match up so that everybody knows where the money is coming from and where it's going to. This breaks it down now by, this is school, this is by school. So there are some simpletons that take place. Every school is, as you can see, is up here, so you can take a look at salaries, principal salary, HAY, you know, all of that stuff. In the, in most cases, you may, could be multiple positions that run those lines. So example would be the dean of students with the principal's salary is actually 2.0. And then further breakdown within the circle. We did the same thing for all the operating websites, line items, including the central office. This breaks it down salary centered by department. It takes a look, it's the color code. I'll have the color code on this, so that you can see it, but it breaks it down again by department. And this is the 4.6 positions that are manated. Every other position is up. These are positions that we really would like to see. We would really like to take a look at that library position between the middle school and the HAY. That is not funded, intervention is not funded. The science teacher position right now is not funded. That could happen just because of people coming and going. It's not a, it's a back pay on a position that moves to dean, music, 0.2 going up. None of that is in this budget, it's all zero doubt as our limitations. There are no general education positions and we're currently still having SLPA quota that will keep track of our numbers that could become mandatory depending on the number of students. This is what you saw before, it's the entire line item, but by, by line, there's a difference. This is the one that people sometimes say provides it, so complicated to reason, or to the big ones, but you can follow through and know the reason, I think that's awesome. Comments, suggestions, ideas, concerns, as this is the chamber of public.
So I have one question. When it comes to the item under the grants where we say we have just over 33 positions tied in with grants and funding, do we know at this time, depending if that funding is dried up, we can't cover these positions?
So one of the things, one of the things is we've moved, we've had to move on some positions, we formed you up because of the budget. And the other one is breakdown of federal grants, both going to be in the 5 to 10% increase. So type of one, special ed, so you, that's, and that's how we're basing on, trying to keep those positions in. However, there could be a situation where somebody leaves, somebody comes and we save somebody, can also be off. Somebody leaves us in the hybrid pool, which is very difficult right now, requires us to hire somebody at a higher salary than we would like to. And then that asks how do we operate because your, your grants are passed in terms of what you can do, if you can't have it anymore. Audience questions? So this is on the webpage as of tonight. We'll probably do another with one more update as soon as possible tomorrow, just to have it as a final document. The numbers have been shared in terms of the bottom numbers with distributed to town hall, which is a link to the parent. I believe FinCon is next, maybe for Monday. And so those numbers will, and information will be all there as well. And then the other part of what happened is we still do not have a state bylaw. But I'd like to speak to you folks about that if you don't mind. I'd like to speak to you folks about that if you don't mind. So once again, the community of Norton is still considered, the formula was considered a ability to pay. The state believes that the town of Norton should be paying more for its education, and it will not give you more money. That's where they're at. That's the formula. It's been like that for a number of years now, as many of you know. However, we do have two things, one of which was a no, and the other one we're not sure yet. Couple of years ago, they signed the Student Opportunity Act. Student Opportunity Act is bringing in about just under six hundred million dollars into public education this year alone. Of that, you will receive sixty-five thousand dollars as the town will. One hundred and nineteen districts in the home are getting thirty dollars per student. Now, that's the government's budget. Typically, the House and the Senate come together, and they usually move it to forty, sixty, some good years, it's actually been a hundred. That number fluctuates between thirty dollars per student and one city getting twenty-four hundred dollars per student. You can take out your calculator, multiply that by the twenty-two hundred students, and we may have some interesting discussion as a community around spending wisely, putting some money away. So that didn't happen. So as you read this wonderful Student Opportunity Act, take the facts, the fact is, one hundred and nineteen school districts are getting thirty dollars per student. It could move up slightly, but it's not going to be under forty, it's not going to be twenty-four hundred. The average, the average for people increased statewide is just under seven hundred dollars. Take that, multiply by twenty-two hundred, and we still have the budget, save money, talk to the town side, potentially put some stuff away for the long term. But that's not a record. Then comes the last, always controversial. I'm not taking the stand one way or the other in this, because it's already voted, it's irrelevant. You voted for or voted against the Fair Share Act, also known as the Million Year Tax. If you've been reading or listening, you have seen that the money is currently in early childhood childcare grants, and absolutely early childhood childcare grants need that in. It's going to go predominantly to third parties, but that's fine. There is no money for K-12, current. Most people who voted yes, voted yes because of the connection to public education, which is what the bill, the Fair Share Act sets. It goes to education and transportation. Currently, you're going to see one training company in the Commonwealth, the MTA, probably getting some of that money yet again, and you're definitely going to see that money go to higher education, because they've already filed that bill. There's still over a billion dollars out there that they're not acting on. But we also have the initiative for a tax break from the governor of pretty significant, one of which is six hundred dollars per child, which could be very beneficial to certain families in need especially. So there is still something up. Yesterday, we met with the entire legislative delegation, who put ten representatives, Barris and the other person, and Howie and Conville, who could have been caught up, and Senator P. And we took them through three things that would help not only Norton, but the communities that have the thirty dollars. And yet the communities that got more than thirty dollars would still get it. The issue is the circuit breaker. If you remember the specialized circuit breaker, you take the first forty-seven, forty-eight thousand, the student that goes out of district, or even if it's a community, but mostly it's out of district. You take the first forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, you own it. If the student was a hundred thousand, you own the forty-seven, you have fifty-three thousand, you may make seventy-five percent of the fifty-three thousand back the following fiscal year for that student. That's how we survive that circuit breaker every year. So if you have a student that leaves mid-year, it could be very good. They graduate out, or they move out of town, you can save on a hundred thousand, potentially be saving fifty thousand, or a percent of that fifty thousand. So that's one part, and that's what we really push with the legislative. Let's increase that seventy-five to ninety, or ninety percent, or let's take that forty-eight thousand and make it closer to thirty-five, thirty-six thousand. In other words, take less off the top to us, or make us pay less, so that we can get a better reimbursement. That's a high six-figure swing for this town and for this budget. I'll say that again, that's a high, in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. That is a deal here for us, especially with the special education problem, the children that we have to educate, must be paid, should be paid. The second part is, we've said to them, you need to support, what you did for SOA, the Student Opportunity Act, that brought in all this money, we need to sit down and talk about the long-term cost of special education. It's the right thing to do, we have to do it, but we have to have a funding source that makes sense. We can't be taken from the left, taken the right, the right, taken the left. That makes no sense whatsoever. And they were, I have to tell you, they were, the delegation was, and we didn't do a pride game. What we decided to do is we said, you may have been told A, B, C, but these hundred and ninety degrees didn't get it. The circuit breaker actually makes them look really good, because everybody in every community, regardless if you've got a ton of money from SOA or not, would benefit from that, from that recommendation, those two recommendations. So that's the update on where we are. We do see, and there is some love, there's some move, but sixty-five thousand dollars does not pay for the district's payroll. And what brings a server about our payroll is some of my staff. So in general, it doesn't pay for that. That means that one hundred percent of the cost of education is practically coming from the town of Norton in many ways. Our net student spending is above, that's true, but if you were to cut that twelve percent that is above, it would devastate the education budget in this town, because you're talking about millions of dollars in net student spending. So we celebrated earlier, and I think you want to die. Because that's the, that's the only reason.
Yes.
I think Dinesh and I have been doing this long enough that we couldn't be surprised anymore. Every year, these tends to be, we can do the best with what we're given and make tough decisions, and hopefully there isn't another year of tough decisions coming up, but we'll see where everything comes in.
Can you give the public a little bit more on state mandated of thirty-four million and change, what that actually entails?
Sorry.
The state mandate this year is, oh, sorry.
And this, and this spending.
That just, yeah, of thirty-four million dollars. And how, kind of, what is it involved in that, Joe? How did we get to that number? I think just educating.
We may have those numbers from the other day, but in general, we did, everybody says that the form is very complicated, that's true. I would say think about every single student that's in this district, that they have cost that formula for that individual student. So Joe Bayard is in ninth grade, the value is twelve hundred dollars. Joe Bayard is on an IEP, that's another five hundred dollars. Joe Bayard is an ELL student, that's how the formula works. It pinpoints categories for students in every single area, for each student of nine areas, home current administration, all the way to auto-district psychological testing and all that stuff. So that's the basis of the formula. It has two major parts. It has the local contribution, which becomes the net student spending. That is where we current, because the per capita income in Norton is considered high in comparison, right? Now, I know that there's some communities next to us, higher, some are lower. You've actually been, per capita, one of the fastest-growing ones in the area. In other words, yes, we have poverty, about a third of our students are high needs, right? High needs, about a third. We, when I started here, it was just over ten percent. So we definitely see something here, but we also have seen the benefits of folks' home values and all of that stuff that has happened over the last few years. The second part that's really important is that goes into the formula, is the wage factor formula. So what that does is that takes a look at what in general is the wages in the community. And the third part, the most important part, is the growth. And as we know, and there's a few of our colleagues in the select board here tonight, our growth has been pretty, I would say, I don't want to use the word flat, but it's not growing by the factor that we need. The communities that are getting the most of that net student spending, to next question, are going to be the communities that have a high-need population, it's like thirteen or fourteen areas, and if you have fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five percent of the student population, high needs, you're getting some significant money from the state versus those communities that don't. We do have, try to, tomorrow, maybe we'll put it under, I don't think we have, we're trying to connect, we didn't put it into the budget, but what it does is, it's important, it's an important system, because every student is getting, if you will, a certain amount of money. But if you have students in high poverty levels, for example, then you are going to get more money. And that's the, that's the basis of the formula in general, not only the system, aside, if I can give you some, some stuff. So this is directly from DESI. This public is under their finance section, and I'm happy to take you through it one day if you'd like. But this is just basically breaks down the comparisons from beginning of the year. We lost, as of October twenty-first, we were down twenty-four students, district-wide. And then they break down the comparisons from twenty-three to twenty-four, and then that gets you the subtotal numbers. So you look at the one that has the categories and the number of students, that's a good one. No, not that one. Okay. So this is the one I have to start. So on the left side, you have all the categories, administration, structural, literature, classrooms, and all that stuff. Across the top, you have preschool, half-day, full-day, elementary, middle, high school, vocational. By the way, that number uses three years for zero. We have thirty-three students, our high school letter, considered vocational students. And in the formula, we're getting five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for those thirty-three students, so you're in pretty well. Need a lot more than that to change this formula. We need to make this number a hundred and fifty, and that's the reason for the innovation pathways, that's the reason for the business program. And then you go across, and you see the numbers, special ed in district, out of district, and tuition out, and there's a formula for that. English learners, pre-k to three, thirty-three, six, eight, nine, those high school ten, and those numbers, by the way, have increased, and the March first numbers will probably show that number. At the end of the day, your foundation per pupil budget is thirteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. You must have, now, if we were to only spend that in Norton, because, take a look at the line items on the left, includes employee benefits, fixed charges by category, then if you go all the way across, hold on, I apologize, you'll see the amount of money that we're actually spending in that line item as calculated by the home. So this is department revenue, DESI, as reported by five student, by the town, reviewed, with part of the tax, I think included the select board, sets the tax rate in November or so, that timeline, that's where all of these numbers come from, because that's how they establish some of these factors. So that's the, and then the one that has every student, each individual student, it worked quite great. This is an interesting one, just our colleagues in Southeastern and Bristol County, they're suggesting that we're going to see an increase of about two students in Southeastern, looks like it's going to be flat for Bristol to Aggie. So you'll see that Southeastern will automatically, no debate, discussion needed, get one point six million dollars from the town of Norton. There's no debate, that's a, you can, you can try to take the money from them, DOR will then come back, say that your budget isn't balanced, and take the money from you and give it, so with the process. You might have heard a little bit of that DR story a few years ago, where they were having a debate about what it called paying, who pays what, it's the same idea, except that two regional communities. This is the one I was telling you about. So you've got, hey, a preschooler costs, an administrative fee costs two hundred and twenty-one dollars, an instructional cost is three ninety-nine, a classroom specialist is a thousand eighty-three, that adds up all the way across. So a preschooler is one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and two cents. Now, preschool in our community is a mandate for special education. That means our students, we charge too much for a P.I.A. student, forty-six hundred, forty-five hundred? Don't quote me on this, but we, we charge just slightly less than that to have the model program within the room, so that we have peer models working with a child who has instructional needs and supports. So as you can see, even if it's a preschool, you're not getting four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars is not paid for that student. If you get thirteen, three oh seven, you're not getting even for the half, you're not even half, and you get the half, it would be ridiculous. So we'll put the, we'll cut, we will link this and put it together on our webpage, in case, for more folks to have more questions about. Mr. Chairman, in the back.
Hi, Michael Tool, fifty-three Lincoln Street. Dr. Akbera, school choice has been stagnant, the rate has been the same for about ten years, I think. Is there any guidance on increasing that from the state that you mentioned?
Yeah. You know how, I'll answer this sort of, you know how certain breeds of animals like eat each other? That's what we're trying to stay away from. They don't want me, they don't want us to get more money from more students because we're taking it from the other town. So what happens, you know, we had the charter schools, and we still had kids going out, charter schools possible, but when we had kids going out for choice, we had zero coming in, because we had youth with choice, and we had on average, a hundred thousand one. And it's been that five thousand flat since it stopped. The reason why they did that is they needed to meet the federal law, because Massachusetts did not have a choice law. And when the feds said, this is way back, I'm going to say the early nineties, mid-nineties, when the feds came out with a law, they basically said, you have to have choice. So if you're in certain, if you're in certain communities, for example, and you have seventeen elementary schools, if that school is underperforming over X number of years, you as a parent have the right to request that your child go to the school that's performing better, right? Doesn't work that way in small communities, as you know. So the feds said, you need a better choice, you need to allow inter-municipality choice, and that's where it came from. And they said it at a percentage of five thousand, they have not moved from that percentage. However, there are two choice online schools that are coupled. One is in Greenfield, one is up the street in Wolf. They're getting almost eight thousand dollars per student. The question that I have, and I've asked, is an equation. Give me eight thousand, go up three percent every year, do something to it, because it could be very beneficial to a community like Norton and others. But it's really, we don't, we don't want to have this issue of, of putting the bus in downtown next city and do what a private school does, right? There's one over by Crescent Ridge, over where I live, there's two private schools that put a yellow bus right there, because we can't be still East and Sharon, they all go there, they get on the bus, and they put up B.C. High, or wherever the school, the school they're going. They don't want us to do that as, as an opportunity. If we did, it's still, we could absorb the cost easily in, in, in ten kids, if ten kids took the bus, we practically zeroed out, if there's ten more, we'd be making money, so. So that's really, I've asked this question numerous times to my colleagues, I've been involved in the ASS, the Super Ten Association, for almost fifteen years now, and I've been very vocal about choice, and about it doesn't move, expenses have gone up, there needs to be a formula change. And I think, if, if, if a charter school's formula can be A, B, C, D, E, and it's different for every student, charter school formula, Norton pays more than Foxborough, Foxborough pays more than Norton, whatever, whatever the numbers, I don't have them on my head, because it's based on what you spend. They don't, they don't, it's not the thirteen, it's the thirteen thousand as an example, three students that goes there, let's say roughly. And Foxborough, more, to manage, whatever communities are aligned to that school, they spend more or less. I will tell you, twenty twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, Sabas and I did a lot of talking about how do we, how do we keep students at home? Remember, we had two hundred and thirteen students at charter schools, twenty, twenty thirteen, fourteen. We have sixty-six amongst three different charter schools. We have one kid that goes to one school, two or three that go to another, and the rest go, I'm telling you, to Foxborough charter. So we definitely, by moving in the direction of budgeted, hope they pay, that definitely has seen, has given us the benefit of, of not paying, we were paying almost three million dollars for charter students, twelve, twenty twelve, thirteen, and now we're paying still a lot of them. It's still a lot of money, but the fact is, I think we've done some homework, trying to bring kids home, give them options. It's a very, right?
Is there, is there any, we saw the charts on special education, is there a reason why Norton seems to be going? I mean, obviously, it's the programs that you're putting together. I mean, it's going to sound horrible, are people moving here just because of the great programs of the, I mean, is there an explanation? I mean, that chart, you see others, you hear of other towns around us that's going down their special ed, in a flat, it's not growing like we are. Is there an explanation of why it's?
You know, I can't, I can't control the real estate market, as you know, you know, in terms of where people are moving into a rental. We do get people who compliment us and say, I've heard that you do a nice job with students who have special needs and so on and so forth. We've had students where districts have wanted to pay us. We've had students where districts have wanted to pay us to send, so in other words, we've become like a collaborative and collective division, which offsets the cost of our teacher to the town and to the budget. But we never really said, you know, and again, I think the variables are so many. I do think that we we currently are working on a tier intervention program around trying to get students that might be struggling supports prior to an I E P, prior to going through testing and all of that. And I think that's kind of worked long-term for us, we're spending not a whole lot of money, just a lot of hours by our staff and administrators on it. But in general, I don't have a good answer for you. Parents have the right to be at the table and say, according to this testing, our team chair people, we have five of them throughout the district, they have the authority under the law to come to a consensus with the family of the needs based on data, not what I want. We do, at times, have to move through a very unfortunate back and forth with parents and with advocates, but that's part of the process of of what takes place. The other part to to your question in general is remember that our survival rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for pre-need is significantly higher than it is nationally. And that's a great, right? That's a great thing, that's not a pet. But women, at times, also come some complicated medical issues. One of the biggest parts that's a problem is how do we draw in insurance? How do we draw in insurance to cover for certain things that students have or receive? And and right now, it's not part of our of the game, it's not part of the formula, it's not part of the process. There's been a lot of discussion about it, but I've been around for a while, and I haven't seen that yet. If there's no other questions, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion proposed to you. I have a vote.
All right, so any other questions? If not, we will move to close the public hearing. All right, this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the 2024 school budget. So, for a second.
Second.
Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mrs. Scheller.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehy is also yes. This time, entertain a motion to approve the FY '24 school budget for the amount of $36,384,830, as is recommended or presented. So, for a second.
Second.
All those prepared? Mr. Schleicher.
Yes.
Mrs. Scheller.
Yes.
Mrs. Schles, yes. Mrs. Scheller.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehy is also yes.
Dan, I think just for the record, I think you said $36,364,000, this is $364,000, another?
Correct. Must be that new English.
But you just, recommended is 36,364,800.
Yeah, I think you said.
We'll correct it, we'll correct it.
I hope you want that.
So at this time, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2023, and March 2nd, open session meetings as presented. So, for a second.
Second.
All those prepared?
401 with one of Stench and Doc.
February, February 9th.
February 9th.
March 2nd. March 2nd. All right, next item is the warrants of names.
I think you can approve the following warrants, school expense warrants, February 9th, 2023, $987,610.36. March 2nd, 2023, $217,386.57. And then school payable warrants, February 9th, 2023, $1,115,810.54. And February 23rd, 2023, $1,102,387.86. I wish to add that to the public record.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Scheller. Next item is the student representative. Leah and Anthony.
So from the J C S, J C S is excited to welcome the Afro Brazilian ensemble tomorrow, who will be showing pre-k to 3rd grade students the art of Katoo era, which is a combination of ancient martial arts. They are also pleased to report that their artists, President Jess, Tracy, and the sportsman Stefan are volunteers to create a wonderful wave. The zara are just about done with the new ocean theme here of J C S lobby. The mural celebrates our seasonal festival, Great Level Ocean Animals, as well as presents all nine school values in a giant sea turtle on Foxborough. The wellness school committee and the North Community group will be unveiling of this mural on Thursday, March 16th at 5:00 p.m. They also can't wait to see the author, Peter Reynolds, and watch all the video watching on Tuesday.
So at the L G N, they're excited for two visits from author and illustrator, Peter E. Brown, who will be joining us on Tuesday, March 14th, to share those people's creative. For author, author Mark, host, and then again, author, president, daughter, and niece, grant on presentation. Students, family, and staff are so excited to see and talk with one of their dear authors.
And from Miguel, they had their first annual A P T O trivia night on Friday, March 1st, which is going to be a fun evening. They had offer visits, offer visits in the past two weeks. Last week, a grand, not all artists came and presented for our 4th grade students, emphasizing the idea of continuing to always be creative. And Friday, March 9th, we had a young adult author coming in to talk to our 5th grade students about finding their own space to be. And they continue to get closer to their playground, to be installed in spring. Students are excited to see the benefit of all their fundraising efforts from Bristol County.
So at the high school, 32 students left today, but lost students to the state debt competition on the next debate. On Saturday, several members of Best Buddy's, which is creating its whole line to raise money for the state's whole efforts. Numbers of Best Buddies work with the high school's step program and organize a prom closet with used dresses and suit jackets. Norton Best Buddy will recognize roll down sneakers, the rockers' socks, the men's turtlenecks. A celebration of math is scheduled for Pi Day on March 14th, when math goes around the building to be redeemed for pieces of pride. And the National Honor Society event, the bond, will be on the Capitol.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any questions? So the next item is a first reading on the secondary students' freedom of expression policy. However, before we get to that, we do want to clarify what has been determined as an error in the presentation of our packets. Included in the packet is an I N B policy, teaching of controversial issues of controversial speakers. For clarity, that is not an agenda item, that is a current policy that is not up for discussion at this time. So any comments will be on the first reading of the secondary students' freedom of expression policy that we are discussing now. Dr. Berra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you and the members of the committee in the public. This came about, as you know, from a situation that happened at Norton High School, where students had a, what was an attempt to have morally walkout of the presentation, working with the principal, which took place, that led to, as we all know, some controversy, disagreements. The committee made made themselves very clear to me concerning what they expected, and pertaining to communication, teachers being involved, safety, and so on and so forth. So as I was backtracking on this, I came across something that had not been sent to us, which is this policy, which is now under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 82, which went into effect on October 24th, 2022. And I'm going to read it for the record, just for the purposes of the audience. "The right of students to freedom of expression in public schools of the Commonwealth shall not be abridged, provided that such right to not cause any interruption or disorder within school. Freedom of expression shall include, without limitation, the rights and responsibilities of students collectively and individually. A, to express their views through speech and assembly; B, to write, publish, and disseminate their views; C, to assemble peacefully on school property for the purpose of expressing their opinions. Any assembly planned by students during regular scheduled school hours shall be held only at a time and place approved in advance by the school principal or his or her, as a need. No expression made by students in the exercises or such shall be deemed to be an expression of school policy, and no school official shall be held responsible in any civil or criminal action for any expression made or published by the students. For the purposes of the section in Section 83.3.5, inclusive of the words to show me any person attending a public secondary school in the Commonwealth, the words 'school officials' show me any member or employee of the local school community." I offer to to the committee tonight that that is standard policy of law. I also applaud for a few comments if you would not honor.
Before we get to that, I want to look at that last sentence. Yeah, it reads weird, right? Well, the only employees of the school committee are yourself, the district manager, and the nurse. So I would say that would be a better sentence to be the school district.
This is a direct copy of Mass General Laws. It's a direct copy of Mass General Laws. I did not cut and paste it. I'm happy to share with you the actual printout of the law from the state in Howlett Beach.
So can I ask, what does that sentence mean? Because, I mean, we're a school committee, right?
It, it, I mean, from my perspective, it touches upon any member or employee of the local school. So at the end of the day, you folks sign warrants that pay costs.
So the only, the only school officials apply us, apply like the members of the school committee. So.
But you said, you caught, because you signed warrants that pay me, teachers, students, and everything else, you are a class employee.
Do we need to get, so if that's the general law?
Again, I I understand the point, but this is a direct copy of Mass General Laws with no comma changes, no punctuation changes, no attempt by me or anyone in my office to change it, it's a cut.
Yeah, I'm not trying to change it, I just think it reads weird, but.
I don't, I read, I read that line probably 10 times, and then they cut a whole call, and basically got the answer that, sure, it's based on, we're all quote-quote Norton Public School employees as a process. I think it's, it's probably legal driving, I'm going to guess, in terms of trying to cover, I mean, there's language in here that I've never seen before. As a law, I can't face any civil or criminal action for this express, for allowing this expression law. That may be so, but if somebody gets hurt, somebody's going to call somebody, and it is what it is.
I had a second.
So as as the committee was looking at some of this, I took it upon myself to take a look, if I can find it now, to take a look at taking the freedom of expression policy and adding a section of furthermore required education from a student organization or individual. The reason why I say that is because I can't control something that I can't control. In other words, students decide not to go through this process, and they just want to walk out, or they just want to hold something, then I believe that that would go through a process of potential discipline, or of use of student handbook versus a, as it says there, working with the principal of the desert meeting. So what I've added, which is some of the comments that were made prior, was the administration will seek information from students and staff about any planned activities. The superintendent will communicate with the chair of the school committee any relevant information. This chair will communicate with all school committee members. As part of the conversation with students, the administration will review expectations and the student handbook. The administration will provide logistics and consider options. This provides us an opportunity that the chair and I had a discussion, and the individual we have, which is before school, after school, maybe during, what's it called, time, learning time, maybe lunch, that type of stuff, instead of interfering potentially with the class. Staff will be reminded that they are not to be involved in such student expressions. The administration will provide supervision and communicate with needed staff. The police department will be providing the information, the administration will communicate with families all their own information.
So I didn't remember my second thought. Is this another example of the Massachusetts courts or Massachusetts legislature making a decision without talking to our educational, economic, arts of Desi?
There is, this is the same, right now, I came upon this literally because of some of the questions that you had asked about the event that took place. And I just dug in and tried to take a look at, are there policies, is there something that I'm missing, so on and so forth? And Mass General Laws, this has not been published with Desi to us at all. And as you know, this is the second time now, the first time was the last one, this is the second time, and it's, to be quite, quite honest, it's the first two times in my almost 10 years of you folks in administration for years, I've never seen it done this way. And so when I, when I saw this, I said, okay, well, wait a minute, we've got other things going on, yeah? And then I sent it out to my colleagues in the character, and said, you know about this in Illinois, we know about this in the same, we didn't know about the other. And so we, and and I don't know what kind of debate and discussion happened on this regulation at the State House. Typically, things like this is an opportunity for people to go to the State House, yay, nay, all of that stuff. And my my association, which I don't want to be legislative committee, we see all of this stuff, this this came in when it went to committee, not published as a request early, because we see all the bills, and this year, there's over 400 bills of education, we've gone through every single one of them, and pinpointed the 12 to 13 that we think are manageable and should be talked, most of them requiring termination support, but not this particular case. It is, it is a first reading, as a first reading allows the committee to have more, more important changes, and also allows the public to have a second reading, which will be the final draft, and actually.
Questions? Okay, I'm just looking ahead. Here in the first view.
I think, I have a lot of questions on this whole policy. Obviously, if you have the fall state law, not that we have to, we do have the fall state law. I do think it gives us very clear guidance when it says, shall be held only at a time and place approved by the super, the school principal or his or her designated. So I think that allows us, as a school committee, to shape this policy how we want to fit permanently. We're still following the state law, but we can put our own policy in place around this, if you will. That's my first thoughts, right off the top. I do like what Dr. Berra laid out there from a communication standpoint. I think that hits on some huge areas that I had massive questions about, you know, when the lockout happened. Just in terms of, you know, who does what, how does it get, you know, deciphered, you know, to to every area of the schools with the parents, school committee, teachers, and so on and so forth. So I think that's, that's definitely some important stuff. But I do think, I think a policy on this, I think we need to add to it, because I think, from my understanding, we've been talking individually to some of us, I think we all had a very clear picture in mind in terms of, you know, what this should look like, and kind of, you know, if you walk out of school, you are skipping class, and your butt is supposed to be in school. We're not going to hold kids, we're not going to arrest kids in the seat. However, we know what important learning time is after COVID. If they're supposed to be in Spanish class, learning Spanish class, stay in Spanish class, learning Spanish class, it's that same. If they're going to walk out, there are consequences to your actions. And I think that's ultimately kind of where I was going with this, with the all lockout. And again, I don't even know if it would have to be a blockout policy. I think we can easily refer back to, if you cut class, this is what happens, that's what you're doing. And I also think from a teacher standpoint, you know, I know those stories of kids going to their math class and walking into math, and their math teacher's not there, you know? Obviously, there's a safety concern there, that mask, but there's also very big concerns here of, you know, John and Suzie want to go to math class and learn, and their teacher's outside walking out the students. That's not something that a public school just ever hit upon. Now, based on whatever lockout, I am in full support, but if everyone knows, I'm very opinionated, and I like to stick to my opinions. And if you want to walk out, and your cause is that great, and you're willing to take that chance of getting reprimanded, go for it. We're going to make sure, we're going to do our best, we're going to make sure our school is safe. Dr. Berra now has communication in mind, we're going to make sure the Norton police are notified. We have to account for every student in school, pretty much at all times, you know, we need to know where students are. We've clearly seen the safety issues, you know, within schools themselves. These kids walked out, did they walk back through the main door, was the door propped open? We have no idea. The Norton police were not notified. We have half, I don't even know how many kids it was, I have no idea. Half of our kids are outside of Norton High School, half are in, you cannot sit here and tell me that we do not have accountability for all those students. tell me that we did not have accountability for all those students. And again, I know this whole thing is going to go back to, you know, why the lockout took place, and yet again, here we are, because it's LGBTQ, you know, I A plus. And that has absolutely nothing to do with why we need to do a policy around this. It doesn't matter if it was a walkout because the football team was mad and they didn't get their field, you know, the field wasn't stretched correctly. It doesn't matter what they're walking out for. That has nothing to do with what's going on, all right? So my biggest thing is, yes, we need to follow state law, yes, we need to make sure, you know, we're allowing our students. I want to teach our students that, hey, if you're this, you know, go to our administration, you work with our administration, hey, if this class is huge to you and you want to do this, let's get behind it. How do we get our community involved? How do we get our students involved? Let's teach these kids, you know, the right way to do things and not just, hey, we're walking out of class. We did a cell phone policy earlier this year. The high school kids, I'm sure, if we might be a little bit restrictive policy, they'd probably have been pretty mad that's going to have their phones in their classrooms. They just get to walk out, no consequences? I don't care if it's fifteen minutes, half hour. You walk out of class or cutting class. We need kids, you know, butts in seats, they need to be learning, and our teachers need to be engaged with them. And that's, you know, in fact, labels me as crazy, so be it. I think our kids need to be in class and they need to be learning.
I mean, I think at least with one of your concerns is noted to not cause the disruption or disorder, which would be if students just stand up and leave, they would absolutely face the consequences of that action because it does not fall under this policy to not cause disruption or disorder. So I think that portion of it is covered. So, you know, so that, you know, the rest of your statement is noted.
I think another aspect of this too is, you have a Supreme Court decision back in the sixties with students protesting about the Vietnam War, the war, some type of ban or whatever. The Supreme Court made it very, very clear. You can do all of this stuff they're talking about, but you want to wear pins, blah, 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 it cannot disrupt the educational process. That's what it says. It's clear as day, cannot disrupt the educational process. If kids are walking out, you're disrupting the educational process. There needs to be a compromise for it.
Anybody else have questions? Any changes we need for the second reading?
I don't care what changes.
We're discussing.
No, you can add the section that I just spoke to you about, and then the other things you want, but you can't change the cut and paste of the law. Sorry, I wish I had that.
Other than the last one, which I still find confusing, I think it's fairly straightforward. I like the additions of the nine as most of our concerns at that point.
And.
Yeah, give me the wrong one.
And the reason for that, that was the clearest communication I got from the five of you to me, was the process of communication. You know, that you wanted to make sure, it was very clear to me that you wanted to make sure that I provided you an opportunity to be informed, ask close to or prior to any such event, which as the public or as you folks know, I directly apologized to the committee for.
And I think, you know, my, having that discussion with you, when it comes to a topic such as this one, I would have been standing right next to our students, one hundred percent would have been out there with them. So to me, the communication was, I would have loved to have known about it, to go out there to support our student body, you know, not necessarily as a school committee parent, sorry, school committee member, but as a parent, as a, you know, community member. I thought of Mr. Schlecker's comments about coming to public, but if this was a community event, we would have had communities. That was one of our, you know, at least my biggest concern regarding communication, because I think this could have been, you know, bigger and more involved than it was. And again, like I said, I would have stayed with the initial movement for students that were outside at that time.
Just one question, as a former principal and all of you went to high school, you know that the running of a school, especially a high school, that every day is very different, and every day had a different chaos. And I'll just tell you that, and all of us know that as former high school students or those of us who are parents of high school children. So one of the things that we will attempt to do, everything we can to not disrupt any teacher being pulled out of a classroom to become a supervisor, but there could be a time, but that's what I have to do, because I don't have enough bodies. I just want to make sure that, and I'd be more than willing to, you know, do a preventive stretch, but that is something that could happen, and does happen on a regular basis in terms of coverage of classes. Yes?
I think that's, I'm trying to keep all our.
Right, so the fact of the matter is, I could have the entire social office have to report, just because, you know, we could, I'll go to the social studies class because the teacher knows that's probably not going to happen. If the teacher is in the classroom, I will support what's taking place.
And again, I think if a walkout does occur, we're not going to be able to control, we're not going to be able to control. Again, students are going to be able to walk out with their seven, you know, fifteen to eighteen years old. I think obviously from the standpoint, when that happens, you know, the communication aspect puts a huge weight, hey, is our teacher on break? We need to monitor the students outside. I'm not saying I just let the students walk outside, and it's a free-for-all either. You know, so I don't want to get too much into the teachers in terms of like, you know, being a part of the lockout in terms of, hey, I'm supervising, make sure no one's running into the woods, going into their cars, doing whatever else, you know? So I think that's, that's hugely important. I think that's, one of the things I've just kind of brought this up, and I don't know if it's a, I guess from a standpoint that we never really got a clarification on, when did the schools, in terms of either principal dolmen or, you know, wherever you were, when did we kind of learn that this was happening? Was it the day, or was it weeks before? You know, kind of, how did that whole process shape up that meant, hey, we knew they were going to be walking out? How did we kind of already have this idea that they were walking out? And, you know, obviously, I don't think we need a, there was a microphone at the field, so I'm assuming someone knew, you know, kind of what was that process like? I'm assuming that's why we had the nine calls.
So the process began, as far as the students wanted to do something, earlier in January, I'd say like the second week. We had a meeting on Wednesday before this, so Monday, it was that Wednesday before, said this is the issue with G S A, and told us what they were thinking about doing. We modeled it, actually, we cut the thesis plan, and then we started to notice a walkout in the complement, or previous to that. Used pretty much the same plan, alerted teachers on that Friday, that there was going to be an event, students walking out, exactly the terrible shape it would take. Monday, the communication pretty late from the advisor of the G S A, student I, if they wanted to participate, they would. Part of that communication, and this is where I'll certainly take responsibility, was not as clear as it could have been, as far as what the expectations of teachers who were in the classroom were, said that we'd find coverage for them, as well as in what had happened four years earlier, we pointed just on the head of this one. And that's what we, and then the communication afterwards, modeled that previous one.
Yeah, and I think that's a huge piece of the nine, because now we have a, we have a top, not, I wouldn't call it a top, it's not a top yet, but we have an idea here of what this should have looked like going forward, you know? And it gives us, doesn't matter what they're walking out for, it's just an exact thing that, here's how the communication works, so everybody can, you know, say it, you know? And I think, you know, one of our concerns was, we were kind of, I don't know if it was the last ones to find out about it, but it was kind of on our, it was social media, you know, people are texting us and everything else, and being like, hey, your kids walked out, what's going on? You know, and we obviously kind of learned about it a little bit, you know, later in the day, obviously, which then, you know, obviously causes, you know, confusion, if you will, in terms of what's going on, why are kids walking out of our school? You know, we don't have all the information, it's really, you know, what happens, another part of our communication. Is anyone else going to, it's like I took over the show here, but.
No, I mean, looking at the policy, I would do that. I like the way the policy is drafted, obviously, taking into account the top portion of this. We can have exceptions to it, we can't do anything about it. I'm fine with the way the rest of the policy is written, as far as concerns that, you know, memory brought to me, which I relate to, and certain that I brought to you. So I'm happy with how the policy is presented to us, other members, if they have any input.
So I'm calm. It's hard to have anything when it's a passed legislation. But with respect to the lockouts in general, I think part of my issue is the disruption, right? So the first line of the legislation says, right, so the students to freedom of expression of public schools, the Commonwealth shall not be infringed, provided that such rights shall not present a disruption or disorder within the school. So there's two very distinct laws there, right? The first part is saying, hey, you cannot abridge their right to expression, unless it's disruptive, because once that happens, you're now abridging the rights of other students to their education. You've got to be really conscious, right? So I think in general, the administration approved of a lockout is bad, that, you really can't, if the students do it, it's a mixed point, and you can't, you can't stop someone from doing what they're doing, right? You put laws in place, laws in place, it doesn't matter. People may do what they, but they cannot abridge the rights of other students to education. Teachers is a different issue, there's a contract in place. I assume they're adhering to it, that's, if they're not for some reason, then that's another issue, and that's not what we're discussing. But with respect to the students and their expression, I'm all for expression, I, I a hundred percent do. I don't care what clause you're supporting, go ahead and express yourself. Try to convince some people that your clause is a workable one, that's, you know, that's the way the world moves, I absolutely do. However, you cannot do it at the expense of other teachers' rights. And so I like the law, actually, I think, we didn't know a lot of, I'm also getting, I'm thinking, right, we, not quote the law, but we did not adhere to what the law was in that lockout, because we allowed for disruption. But again, we, you got to be conscious, and I think, I think this is maybe more of a societal issue in general, that we started to worry so much about the rights of the individual, that we're kind of forgetting about the rights that are getting trampled on by individuals, that we're against. Again, we don't want to squash people's individuality, but it can't feel like the expense of everyone's. It's just, it's not fair, so, that's kind of like thirty thousand.
I think, you know, the funny thing about laws is always this interpretation piece of them. The way I, you know, kind of took this when I saw the law, is without a plan in place, as in they talked to the administration, they set this up, it was quote-unquote approved or supported. I think personally that doing that thing causes that less of that disruption or disorder, rather than if we had four hundred kids stand up and leave with no forewarning, with no chance for our staff to accompany their parents with scrambling, to have somebody out there to help them, I think that's more disruptive. So that's my interpretation of it, is four hundred kids decide to go support something and told nobody anything, you have a full-on, and I think that's where we come back to, if four hundred students do that, I would think there would absolutely be penalties for them versus a planned, you know? And part of my issue with this, you know, publicly speaking, is I think they could have had a better time of the day to do it, whether that's before school, after school, in L L B, that would have been my recommendation to the administration. That being said, I'm not an administrator, I'm going to defer to them. So again, these are just my thoughts, so I'm not trying to disagree with you, but that's how I view it.
No, it's fair. I would find out that less disruption is still disruption.
So a couple different things, just to remind the committee, when we talk about disruption and we talk about penalties, just remind yourself that they're not being suspended from school.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that's been taken away from my safe class.
What is our kind of the in-house law if you can't cut class?
Uh, probably detention, followed by Saturday detention, followed by potentially in-house if we go that route, followed by, and then of course, if they don't do it, then a visa that, or we might give them an exercise, but we're trying to create, create stuff right now as we speak around things that aren't working, because if you don't.
Correct, and I think that's like, I don't think we need to recreate the wheel on how we do this, that just, hey, if you cut class, you're supposed to be in class, you know? And again, I would do it with the same, you know, again, I don't think our teachers are going to be involved in this, but like, if our teachers are late to school, you'd probably get a, you know, verbal warning, and if it's a visual problem, blah, blah, it should be the exact same thing. Hey, you know, Nick Schlecker teaching math, you walked out of your classroom today, here's a doc, check, you know, here's your verbal warning, here's your written warning. It's not that we need to recreate the wheel, we just need to follow through on the consequences to your actions.
I'm sorry, there was a question.
I just want to say, I think maybe the kid for calling any kind of a walkout or disruption to the classroom, and pretending as though all the kids were harmed by that ten, fifteen minutes each, I think, as a matter of fact, probably did a lot of really good stuff for the kids that did fear it, that they had good things to say, that they felt inspired.
We're going to get your mic out, Jeff, hang on one second. We just can't hear you.
I think a lot of the like. So just, I can say, I want to be careful about how we define disruption with classroom. I don't think ten or fifteen minutes would be considered disruption by courts, and I think it's considered by the school community or community as a disruption, is a re-instructed in the day, and it didn't harm any children in the school day, in the classroom, or otherwise.
But Denise, you're completely right, but it could have.
So my tip today, or smart, walk out of the classroom without telling a single soul that they're hearing, say you walked out. That was a disruption. This organized G S A walkout is not a disruption.
That's your opinion, my respect your opinion.
I think, I think we find it courts, it's a fair statement, but we can find out if we want.
So let's say, let's say my child has a math test on Friday, and in math class on Thursday, a bunch of kids get up and walk out, they disrupt the class, my child doesn't get the information they need to prepare for the test, they do poorly on the test. My child pays consequence, it is a disruption. You can say it's not a disruption, of course it is.
If it was the entire class, or the teacher was walking to our classroom, and no one there to fill their spot, or to help the kids during the day, first of all, the visual teacher would probably delay the test, if that's the case, but second of all.
They never did.
Right, I mean, I think, so you direct that situation when you come to it, I don't foresee that would have been a situation considered.
Yeah, and so your rationale.
It was ten, fifteen, it was only a class, ten, fifteen minutes.
But the problem was, it was during class time, so that in and of itself can be considered a disruption for the other students that choose not to participate, because the students that participated absolutely have their beliefs, and their beliefs aren't what they are. But if someone doesn't share them, and they're in class to learn math, science, or whatever, and there's a disruption to that when students get up and leave, there inherently is, you know, much like if, if, you know, if we're taking a moment of silence at any other event and someone gets up and leave, that's a disruption. And so there's students that don't have those same beliefs that will face, you know, a potential disruption of their educational time.
And I don't know that I knew the classroom that they had impacted, but I would imagine you could easily just solve that by giving a worksheet, saying, here's a practice sheet on the math stuff, I'll do that in ten minutes, and after, the neighbor teacher's a walking kid, but he has.
But we're busy, so we're going to get busy rather than hands-on learning. That's what we want to do. What, this one was fifteen minutes, what about the next one? And I have a clause that I want it to be four hours. That's not a disruption?
Who's there? Who's going to have four hours?
We don't, that's what we're, that's what we're saying right here, don't approve anything.
Four hours, I think it would be a disruption.
But Denise, you can't, you can't tell me what my clause is and how long it's going to be.
And you can't tell the principal what it is either. The principal decides, the principal gets to decide what's allowed, what's an expression of speech, not yet.
So say what I'm.
The principals of the schools, individual schools get to make the decision about what's considered an acceptable expression of speech, not yet, or expression of.
Great, so now we're going to put our principals of the schools.
It's, that's the law. The law says that.
That's not accurate, you said that the principal gets to determine what's an expression of speech, but the law determines what the expression of speech.
I think she said disruption of the law, or it's a.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
That's the law.
Yes, but it has to be, you cannot disrupt. You can't just say, hey, you can decide, I'm going to walk out, I'm going to do whatever I want, because that's my, that's my expression of speech. If I say, hey, you know what, in my, in my child, or I'm, I go to high school, and in my class today, I've been telling them, I am firmly a Patriots fan, and that is my thing, and so I'm going to stand up and I'm going to hold up my iPad, and I'm going to show the Patriots highlights of the last five years, and I'm going to do that for the entire class, right? Because that's what I feel on my clock. That's a disruption, someone has to say, it's disruptive, you're not allowed to do it. It's as simple as that. Mr. Goldman, whoever the principal is, will make that call, yes? I'm not, I'm not going to make it from wherever I am at the time. It's a fall state demonstration.
It's, it was the administration, a hundred percent, we agree. I don't think we disagree that we're not saying, hey, this is a disruption, and that's not. You just can't have something that is disruptive. I think this law was written vaguely on purpose. I think they say a disruption or whatever, because it's vague, it's up to interpretation, right? So it has to be approved by the principal ahead of time.
And I'm telling you, if you look at other laws, if you look at other laws and other data facts, other challenges that are coming before the course, they're not going to see a ten, fifteen minute disruption to the classroom as a disruption under this law.
Are you a legal analyst on this kind of stuff?
So I'm a lawyer, not a lawyer, I do a lottery, and I read many of the cases that have come before different courts and what they...
And what's disruptive to your child, like, is it disruptive to other girls' child, children?
There's not going to be one who acts out of this all the time.
I think it's five minutes and five hours.
But here, we're just...
Exactly, so if your opinion is dangerous disruption, it's not a disruption. Fifteen minutes, so what's disruptive?
So we could always ask for the laws, right?
We're going to wrap this up because in lieu of a legal challenge, we are not legal analysts. So we don't have a legal challenge, we've discussed the policy, we've taken some input at this time, unless there is other comments, questions.
I just have a quick question, what's the next step? You can go, you can answer.
The next step regarding what?
This, like...
This is of course reading of the policy that the district is looking to introduce. We would have feedback from the committee, we would then have a second meeting at another meeting, most likely our next meeting.
So, forgive me, but, so this is the first reading, we've all heard it. The next one is going to be, like, what the policy is, is what Dr. Byatt and the second paragraph that you add, that's it for right now, that's it. We're not going into separating out a walkout policy. This is what, this is what we're talking about, this is what we're...
We can consider a walkout an expression of the students, an expression of policy. So we would think a walkout is an expression of your opinion or something like that, therefore we assign this as an expression of policy. We would, walkout in any way, shape, or form, because that would be a separation. So this would be if a student group has an expression or a belief or something they want to bring attention to, there's the motions they have to go through to make this happen. With, yes, one second. With no other changes, this policy as presented would be voted on at a second, after a second meeting. If we had more to add to it, for example, if Mr. Sabas wanted to add another bit to this, we would vote, or that would be presented and we would vote on it.
To a group like this, or would it just be the five of you?
We would set the policy so we are the ones that vote on it. That is our job as a...
I think it's clear, again, the issue is that it's an agenda item. It presented as an agenda item and it's voted as an agenda item.
So it's what I add to what Dan said, I don't see there being a reasonable walkout policy. This, other than the nine points, this is national law. So we can't, we can't change anything in this. We can't, we can't have another policy that somehow supersedes this and does something different than this. So the legislature has spoken and this is how it's going to be. We can put a walkout policy in place and it's going to say, you can't walk out, you know, unless you feel like your expression, but we can't abridge you unless it's a disruption. It has to be the same thing, so there's no reason to have a redundant policy. This is, this is an expression of policy, it's going to stand as it is, I mean, it is what it is. We can't, we can't vote down a law.
So I guess I'm confused as to why are we even talking about it, the law?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know why it's such a debate.
So if the law is presented to us, we can take the law, leave that portion of the policy and add our...
Which is what?
Two cents to it, so to speak. We can not change the law, we can say, take it further and say, we would like students to do X, Y, and Z. We're not trampling on their expression rights, but we're saying for the Norton School District, for your expression rights, we would like you to do X, Y, and Z as part of our policies that we announce.
So we could, though we can't abridge their rights, we could expand their rights if we wanted to. We can say we're going to give you more than a law.
Hi, I'm James Allen, Norton School District president. I just want to bring up that 2018, the high school students also organized a walkout and that was for school violence after the Hartland shooting. So this is not something new, this has happened before, this discussion ever came up when it was about just true disruption of school, which would be violence that we're seeing all across our country. So I just kind of want to point out just that point, that this is not the first time that a student-led organization within the middle school and the high school has done a walkout that was supported by the administration. And, and so I just want to point, this is not new, this has happened in the past.
Okay.
There was another in communication.
But the walkout is new to some of us. I was elected to help.
I understand, I'm going to say that this is not new, this is a student-led organization.
I think it's important to recognize too that the walkouts that have happened prior to this law, they had the national walkouts, if you remember, they were big pushes. I very clearly communicated to the school committee that this could be happening in our schools. Our legal councils for the districts at the time said, you got to be careful, trying to keep it as organized as possible, that type of stuff, because the kids are, blah, blah, blah. The new civics curriculum talks about organizing. I think, you know, I think it's really important to talk about one thing regardless of the topic. First of all, we authorized the walkout because it's related to a student organization. This law doesn't even have that. This law means that if a group of students, an individual students, issues a topic of the same discussion, want to get together and they want to hold a meeting to discuss their views on pro-life, they have the right to do that under this law. They don't have to be sponsored organization in the school time as other organizations have been in the past, which is a little, even more frightening for me as a super tech, because as a former principal, I mean, a lot of things can happen around these, around these things. And then the last part, I think that's important, is if you watch cable news, regardless of which one it is, what do you see? We see violence in the streets. And I think that maybe part of this law was, how do we teach students to do it within a safe, safer, organized, communicative process? Instead of just walkout tomorrow, I'm leaving, and we have no idea what takes a while. And that's, I think, the intent of what I was trying to say to all of you folks is, if we have students that come together and say, A, B, C, we want to do this, then it will be the administration of the high school who says, I fully support any of those which you want to do, we want to do it at seven fifteen to seven twenty-five. We want to do it from, we want to do it during LLB, which is not a director's department. We want to do it right after next school. We want to do it at the end of the march at two fifteen to downtown Norton. And, you know, we're going to block one twenty-three, and now we have to make sure that we do have all of our ducks lined up. And we want to do it next Tuesday because it's a national day of whatever. I think that that's the intent of some of this because our kids are not being brought up in a very good society when it comes to watch violence from four to seven. And I don't get it from the left, like, they're doing it all over the place, the left, we have the right to do it. And it's interpreted in so many different ways, organizations and names and all this other stuff. And I think that our kids are trying to, and I would tell them, regardless of what we think about what's her place, it was an old day right after this. We didn't have this fighting because one was pro and one was anti. That's the lesson. We didn't have these library discussions at lunchtime that led to kids dating each other, regardless of political views, of which we have various. Let's be honest, we have very political views around any of the hot topics. And that's great, we should. Unfortunately, our, unfortunately, our students are better at talking about it than our adults.
All right, so at this point, we have any other topics?
Since Jeremy is hosting, we have been on fourteen twenty and seven PM. I believe that is going to be here at the middle school library with the finance committee, select board meeting, and with the U S O W. It's at seven o'clock.
Anything else? Entertaining the movement for the year. Second? All clear? Have a good night, thank you.